All right, we have a motion to approve those minutes. They're properly seconded. We'll approve by the normal sign of "aye." And all opposed. Here in "none," motion carries. Doesn't appear to be any proclamations or recognition of citizens by the mayor. Any of the aldermen or alderwomen like to make any proclamation or recognition? Okay. Now have a communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have is once again, just to bring you up to speed on our COVID preparations. As you have noted, since the last meeting, we have clamped down on our requirements to enter all city buildings. Masks are now required for anyone entering our facilities. We have, we're still waiting on a fogger to come in that we've had ordered for many months to help sanitize the facilities. On last Friday after the election, we had a commercial person come in and sanitized the lobby and the hallway after the election where we had so many people to come in during that, and we took care of that. Once we get this fogger, we'll be able to do all that stuff for ourselves. We have also ordered a monitor to put up at the community center that will check people's temperatures by the heat signature on their face, the infrared when they come in the door, make it much easier than trying to go up and check everybody individually as they come in. We have received a grant from the state of Tennessee that will reimburse us for any expenditures that we make along those lines as far as COVID expenditures. And since the pandemic began, we have been tracking those costs in anticipation that that would happen. And so thankfully, the state announced that since our last meeting, and we qualified for $102,000. And of course, it's all reimbursement. You have to spend it, then submit your request for reimbursement, and then generally on those types of things, you get your money back in 60 to 90 days. We haven't had a lot of expense. We've had some in buying masks, sanitizer, cleaning supplies, the thermometers, some folks that had to be out because of exposure, had to be put into quarantine. And so we will have some expense already that we can turn in. And we are, we do have other equipment ordered that we will be turning in when we get that. But thankfully, it'll be at no cost to our taxpayers. The state will be reimbursing us for that. We have continued and will continue to follow the executive orders of the governor. Every Monday morning, we are continuing to have our department head meeting, and we go over any directives or executive orders that have come out from either the CDC or the governor for the prior week and how we're going to implement those into our plans. And that has been our procedure from the beginning, is to follow the governor's guidelines. We have not deviated from those in any way. We feel like that is the safest and surest route for us to take in dealing with this situation, is to strictly follow the governor's guidelines. And we will continue to do that. And that's about the situation so far.
Okay. All right. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Item number six is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees, which we have none today. Item seven is reports from committees, members of council, and other offices. Item A is Tanner Preservation Alliance.
A couple of you came out and did a tour of the building the other day to see the progress since then. The electrical has gone in. I don't know if the state inspector made it up today. I didn't get a chance to check with those guys. But it's either today or Thursday, and once we get that approval, then it's floors, ceilings, and painting. And then it's, I got a question. Once the building's done, does this agenda item come off? Do I don't have to do this anymore? Because that'd be great. I'm just asking. It can be either way.
Yeah, yeah. Gary, we're going to hold you to it until, at least for a couple of months after the project is totally finished.
Yes.
How's that?
All right. That's an incentive to get done, right?
Yes. Somebody has to be held accountable, right? Well, thank you. Is that all?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Don't you miss Carleen?
Every day. Every time I think about if I'm gonna, whatever decision that gets made, I wonder what she'll think about it and how mad she'll get if she doesn't agree with it.
I'm sure.
What would Carleen do?
Okay. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
All right. Item eight is old business, unfinished business. It's consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2020-05, amending the zoning ordinance for the city of Newport. Chapter three, general provisions, section 309, signs prohibited, signs, and product sales signs.
And Mayor, you almost got all that caption in there, but just to be extra cautious, let me read that it's ordinance 2020-05, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Newport. Chapter three, general provisions, section 309, signs prohibited, signs, product sale signs by approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And it would be second reading, of course.
Second reading. All right. You heard the reading? We're going to entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Okay. We do have a motion on the board to approve the ordinance as read. We need a roll call, I would think.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Puffett?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine. A is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2020-06, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
Mayor, this is our first budget amendment of the new fiscal year. The bulk of these items are projects that were in last year's budget that did not get finished, and so we are moving those monies forward. This is not, for the most part, new monies. This is money from last year's budget that went unspent because the project didn't get finished completely in last year's budget year and will be finished in this budget year. And so those funds, because they were unspent, have to be officially moved forward into this budget because we did not put them into this budget because we didn't know what would be spent and what would not until the year finished out. So the majority of this is just a housekeeping thing to move those monies forward from the unspent funds from last year's budget on ongoing projects such as the Tanner Building and the final bill for the police department and those kinds of things that had to be moved forward into this year's budget before we can officially write a check for it.
Discussion for the council?
And Mayor, I'll read the caption into the rest of the ordinance, 2020-06, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2020-2021.
Okay. You've heard the reading of the ordinance. I will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make that motion to approve the first reading on that.
Okay. Have a motion on the board to approve the motion as presented. Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Puffett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item B is consideration of resolution number 2020-13, authorizing the city of Newport to participate in the public entity partners, safety partners matching grant program.
This is a grant program that is done by the group formerly known as the Tennessee Municipal League. I still have a hard time saying public entity partners because that's TEP. But anyway, it's the OTML group that changed their names to that for whatever reason, which is our insurance provider, our liability insurance, and our comprehensive insurance on all our properties, our workers' comp, and so on. And each, we have gotten this grant since about, I know, since like 94, about 1994, we've gotten this grant every year. It's a matching grant up to $2,000. And basically, it's just free money because it's stuff that we buy anyway, and it qualifies for this program. And so we get, if we spend $4,000, we get $2,000 back. And we spend way over that every year in safety supplies. So it's just something they do to help us out, to promote a safe work environment for our people, and they help pay for our safety equipment. And we apply for it every year, and it's automatic. We get it every year. And we have, like I say, for 24, 25 years.
Okay. All right. Further resolution? Discussion? All right. We're going to entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
We need a roll call for a resolution.
Okay. In that case, we'll approve by the normal sign of "aye." Okay. That was a pretty tippy "aye," but I will.
We didn't have one until that beats nothing.
In that case, any opposed? Here in "none," motion carries. Item C is consideration of resolution number 2020-40.
And it's a never-ending thing. And it's not going to get any better until the roosters are gone. The chickens are all over the yard. I mean, dogs, cats, I mean, rabbits, they've got it all over there. And it's just too much, you know? And I really need some help.
Grant, Gary? Would you like to comment?
Grant's been over there on multiple occasions. It's on Warwick's Road. I've been over there myself. We have addressed this issue as best we can. The, Grant can tell, he's been there many more times than I have, and he's talked to the guy. I mean, and I've not talked to the guy. I just went over and looked at him.
Well, as far as the gentleman that moved in a lot of the cars, I did. I was not able to find him, but I did serve him with a notice. And according to our ordinance, we have to give him 30 days before we can take action after he served. So we're in the midst of that 30 days right now. And as soon as that's up, then I'll pay him another visit, and it'll probably end up in City Court. But as far as the roosters, I mean, we don't have an ordinance that forbids roosters. It just says they can't be at large. So we're sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place.
They're at, I mean, no.
Are they not?
There's so many, yeah. There aren't to be, they are to be a limit on how many you can have. I mean, my God.
The only limits that we have are on cats and dogs. You can only have four cats or dogs in the city. There is no limit on livestock.
So in other words, this is a waste of, you know, it's a waste of time. I'm not going to get any help, see?
Well, I mean, we're doing everything we can do within the law that we're allowed to do. We can't just go do something because we just take a notion to do it. We have to operate within the law. We have no choice on that. It's not, I mean, that's not.
Chicken fried.
Nobody realizes that, you know, it costs me $4,000 to get the underbelly of that trailer tore out and redone. I don't want to have to, I can't afford to do this again. I'm not even working now.
Have you seen any evidence of rats over there in the trips? I know you've been over there multiple times.
Oh, you won't see many now. Orkin?
I have, the times I've been, but of course, you know, I'm not there in the same, but no, I haven't seen any.
Well, I can bring you pictures.
That's not to say that you're wrong. I'm saying that I haven't seen any.
You know, and it's awful. I mean, when you have to replace the stove inside the house where they beat it out, feed in it, and then I had to replace the dishwasher because it got in it. I mean, it's just mountain to mountain, money, money, money. And it's not my fault. I mean, it's, they're going to have to do something.
Well, the property is totally different than it was the first time that this lady came and complained.
Yeah, well, they moved it to the.
We made them clean all that stuff out from behind. They had a bunch of building material there. We made them move that out. They had junk car there that he was working on, put the motor in. We made them put the motor in and get that out of there. Everything that we could do within the ordinances has been done.
Look, they just move it to one side. They move it from here and move it to the other side where they think it's, you can't see it. I mean, yeah, they can.
The car's operational. I mean, that.
I'm not talking about the cars. I'm talking about the junk, the piles of wood and blocks and rocks, and they just pile them up everywhere. I mean, the rats is what I'm upset over. The rat population is overwhelming. And Orkin said they probably would never go away.
Minute and a half.
Not until they got rid of those chickens. Until they get rid of those roosters, they're not going to be no better. But like I said, I need some help, guys. I wouldn't be here if I didn't.
Well, at this point, I don't, perhaps I don't know what else we can do if we've done everything within the ordinance. Obviously, I don't, we're not, we can't come out and do the extermination, you know, routine that Orkin can do, but it's an unfortunate situation, but I don't, I don't know where else, where else we go.
Well, and when I was here before, he said he'd put my name down on the list for a grant to help me with this.
I didn't tell you that.
Yes, you did when I was here before.
I don't, I don't know. I said that we can do, we can help you with stuff. If we got like a grant to help you upgrade your property or something, I didn't say anything about a grant to clean up anything.
I didn't say to clean up. You just said you dealt me with a grant. That's all you said, you know?
Well, I don't come up with that. I know I said we would deal with the issue, that we would get on the issue. And I've been over there probably 10 times myself and looked at that property. And I don't know how many times he's been there, more, a lot more than I have. And so, we've done everything we can do to address that problem. I mean, we've been over there a ton. And he stayed on them. He's even went to their friends and had their friends get on them and say, can you all, can you do anything with your buddy over here? We're trying to get him to clean his property. Will you talk to him? I mean, we've took every road we can to try to make something happen over there, but we can just do so much. But now, if you want help with your property, you can talk to Gary. We have grants. We have a city grant that will help you to try to, to help with your property, to try to upgrade your property a little bit. But we have grants for that. But you'll have to talk to Gary about that. Gary's over that. It just depends on what you want to do.
Hey, all I can do is try. I mean, I've done everything else I know to do. And I'm just stuck, like I said. When you don't even have a job, and then you can't, you can't get any help to boot, you're in a mess.
Mr. Mayor, good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My apologies, I'm not on the agenda. This was sort of last minute. I come to you with the permission of Mayor Ottinger and the blessing of the task force. The COVID-19 Task Force, as you know, has been meeting since March every week at the Operations Center, discussing a variety of topics and things that are going to affect not only Coch County, but more specifically, the city of Newport, Parrotsville, and the surrounding areas. So, there are two items that seem to be on everybody's mind and lips today in the last several days, which is schools reopening and college football. I can't do anything about college football, but we're going to see what we can't do to try to help out the schools. I want to brief you on the Substitute Teacher Initiative. It's an idea that we've been working on for the last three weeks. I've been working on it with Casey Kelly from the Coch County School System. And here's essentially the idea. We're calling on elected officials, agency directors, and department heads from the county government to step up and serve as substitute teachers should and when the need arise. Right now, Coch County, with all of its schools and students, only has 56 substitute teachers that they can pull from. And with us entering potentially a second wave of COVID-19 as well as cold and flu season, we want to do anything and everything that we can to keep the schools open and to keep kids being educated. So, we're going to need some responsible, educated adults to stand in front of some students and assist with substitute teaching. Now, the idea doesn't have to be exactly coming in there and teaching Mrs. Sway's 10th grade, you know, history class. It could be simply a career day talk. I can tell you, if I was a, you know, sophomore in high school and I had the opportunity to have Mayor Dykes come and talk to me for an afternoon about what it's like to be a city mayor, or Mike Hansel talk to me about what it's like to be an alderman or a police officer, I think I'd be very interested in hearing that at that age. So, what we're looking at doing is bringing in some folks, as I said, elected officials, agency directors, and department heads to help out. Once Casey goes through that 56 named sub-list, there'll be a second list that picks up from there of those folks I mentioned, and then calls will start being made. Now, if you can't do it, you can't do it. If you've got operational commitments or something going on that you can't pull away from, then he'll go to the next name on the list, and we'll keep trying to get somebody in that classroom for the day to help out the school. Casey's reached out to the attorneys and the comptroller, and we've got some very, quite frankly, we couldn't have gotten better news from them about how all that would work as far as payment and things like that goes. We're still ironing out the details, but I want, before we move forward, we wanted to make sure that the county legislative body was briefed on the idea and that the city legislative body was also briefed on the idea. So, I took advantage of tonight's meeting to come and let you know what we're working on. Still a work in progress, but that's where we're at.
I volunteer to substitute teach for the girl volleyball team.
Oh, man. I didn't hear that, did I?
And here, my peripheral vision, he's been over here nodding in agreement for the last five minutes. I'm thinking, I got an ally up there. What questions might you have? I'll answer as many as I can.
I got one.
Yes, sir.
When you talk about the county school system and the city school system, of which is only one school in the city, but are we limiting? If we had people here to volunteer, would they be limited to NGS? Or would it be broader, county?
That's a great question. I am bridging the gap between the city and the county. And any information or anything that I come up with for the county is going to be shared with the city. Dustin Morrow specifically, and I will work together on this just the way Casey Kelly and I have been. So, what I need to find out is, for instance, if Casey Kelly can't get any substitute teachers to go out to Cosby High School for the day to teach any number of things, and I'm able to do it, whether I'm working at the Operations Center or I'm working at the school, I'm still being paid out of the same line item. There won't be any crossover. The cities, the county school system won't be obligated to cut me a check. There won't be any double dipping. So, what my question is, is can county employees help out the city with the same agreement? You know, will county employees continue to be paid if Sheriff Fontes needs to go to Newport Grammar and teach a class that morning or do a career day talk with the kids? Will, you know, will that affect anything? We're still ironing out that detail. But I would like for there to be crossover to where city officials can teach in county schools and vice versa. Did that answer your question? Was that the question?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So, what other questions might you have? Anyone? Again, purpose, method, and state. The purpose is to keep the schools open as long as we can, and I don't want them to shut down because there's a lack of responsible adults stepping in front of kids while the experts, the teachers, are healing. Method, I'm going through the process right now. I went to the central office day before yesterday. I completed my application. I made an appointment to get fingerprinted and have my background checked done in Sevierville tomorrow morning at 9:20. Once that's done, they'll, you know, hozzi-gazi, you're a substitute teacher, and I'll be on the list. So, I'll make sure that's all put into print for everyone to, they can follow the same process. But background checks and everything still will be required, just like for any other substitute teacher.
Questions?
Is that money reimbursable? Won't you pay for it?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. And I know it's $35 in change to pay for that. That's what they told me. And I was a substitute teacher in Knox County as well. So, I've been through this process, but with Knox County. I will find out if that 35 bucks is reimbursable.
I thought it was much higher than that. I thought it was like 60. Yeah, I thought it was like 60 for Newport Grammar School.
Yeah, when I set my appointment, it was 30. I'm supposed to bring a cash check or whatever for $35 and some cents, so I've got it.
You're saying with these two different standards, two different checks, Newport Grammar has the word standard background check and one except one from the county school?
I can't answer that. But I can tell you that when I went through my background check for Newport Grammar School and had to be fingerprinted and all the above, it was like $60.
I'll get an answer to that question. Anything else?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
If there are no other items, anyone left to speak, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks.
We are adjourned.